Good morning and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Workshop for Tuesday, September 28th, 2021. This is a comprehensive plan amendment workshop, and it is totally virtual. And I'll start out by asking Ms. Melissa Zornito, please, please take this.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We've got two agenda items to discuss with you today. The goal of the workshop is to get your input on these plan amendments as they move through our processes. The first of these amendments is Plan Amendment 2116, which is the mobility section update to the Comprehensive Plan. This is part of the larger update of your Comprehensive Plan. And Katrina Corcoran and Rich Clarendon are here from our team to make the presentation. Thank you.
Before we move any further, could we have the roll call?
Thank you. Sorry, I'll do a roll call here. Or can, who's gonna deal with the roll call?
At the clerk's office.
Okay. Can we please have a roll call?
Right. All right, thank you. Kemp?
Here.
Cullen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I believe we're ready for my presentation now on the mobility section. HTV, if you could share my presentation? Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Katrina Corcoran, and I am the co-lead on the update of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Mobility Section. I'm a senior planner with the Planning Commission, and my co-lead is Rich Clarendon, the Assistant Executive Director of the TPO. This is HCCPA 2116. Next slide, please. Starting off with some background in the mobility section. It is currently adopted as the transportation element of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. It is part of the Community and Built Environment Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. We've had extensive collaborative working group meetings, including staff from Plan Hillsborough, Hillsborough County, including Public Works and Community and Infrastructure Planning, HART, and of course, other staff based on topic area. Next slide, please. The mobility section policy language will be implemented through updates to regulations and ordinances, capital projects, education and outreach, and coordination with other implementing agencies, for example, HART. Next slide, please. This slide shows some key changes to the mobility section. This includes a focus on equity. So if you look at the draft language, you'll notice that we do have one or two modified existing transportation element policies in there. However, a lot of the objectives and policy language for equity or achieve equitable outcomes is new. We've also worked on institutionalizing Vision Zero. So the current transportation element has a lot of safety-related language. However, we've worked to update that language and also bring forward the concepts of Vision Zero, which were not around or implemented as much locally at the time of the last transportation element. We also have language addressing resiliency in transportation, language establishing multimodal quality or level of service standards. One thing I will note here is that these standards will be, will be referenced them in the mobility section. They will live in the capital improvements element, and that has not yet come forward for update. We have language coordinating transit service with land use, and we've worked closely with HART staff to ensure that that language, as it was developed, works with HART. We have a section on building a smart system, so including leveraging benefits of the county's advanced traffic management systems. We've worked to update outdated references and concepts. That includes references to outdated plans that are in the current language. We also have a section on preparing for emerging technology. So that includes things such as e-bikes and scooters, Uber and Lyft, even things such as emerging connected vehicles and autonomous vehicles. We've worked to incorporate context-based roadway planning and design principles, and that is primarily through the context-based classification map and definitions. Next slide, please. This slide gives an overview of the goals and contents of the mobility section. We have six main goals, which I will be going over in more detail in the next few slides. We also have an implementation and a monitoring portion. I'll note that this will not be adopted. It is essentially a reference page to county's upcoming implementation documents from county staff that are related to the mobility section. And finally, we have an assessment of conditions, which is an update of the current transportation element maps. I will note here that while most maps are not adapted, some will be adapted, most notably the context classification map that is coming forward as a part of this amendment. Next slide, please. Our first goal is to achieve equitable outcomes. And one note here, our goal, well, the goal is in full on the slide, the objectives are summarized, so those may not be word for word what is in the draft language. Our goal here reads to build a transportation system that supports the needs of all users with respect to ability, resources, identity, and mode preference. Our objectives include engaging the public to ensure everyone can collaborate and provide input on transportation planning and implementation, considering both positive and negative socioeconomic, physical and mental health impacts of transportation projects, especially in underserved communities, and recognizing and avoiding repeating past injustices, striving to alleviate or mitigate disproportionate burdens on underserved communities. Next slide, please. Our second goal is to achieve Vision Zero by providing a multimodal transportation system that prioritizes the safety of all roadway users. Our objectives here include using an integrated safe systems approach to develop and design improvements. And for those of you who are not aware, a safe systems approach is essentially the engineering counterpart to Vision Zero. So it utilizes building tolerance into engineering facilities and ensuring that there are less injuries and fatalities on the roadways. Our second objective here is to protect vulnerable users through that safe systems approach, speed management, and context-sensitive multimodal facility design. Our third objective is to assist in equitable education and fair enforcement of traffic laws for all road users. And our final objective here is to use that safe systems approach to identify and improve high injury corridors. So this includes collaborating with outside agencies that are also involved with Vision Zero, as well as referencing the TPO's crash reduction targets. Next slide, please. Our third goal is to maintain the system in good repair, preserve assets, and improve resiliency to climate change. Our objectives here include maintaining existing transportation infrastructure while repairing or replacing deficient facilities, supporting the maintenance of public transportation assets. So that includes not only continuing the county's support of Sunshine Line, but also supporting HART in the ways that the county can, for example, repairing a sidewalk near a bus stop, that sort of thing. And finally, maintaining or improving the capability of the multimodal system to evacuate vulnerable populations and enhancing the system's resiliency to withstand and recover from a disaster. I will note with this objective that it is required by state statute. Next slide, please. Our fourth goal is to provide choices when not driving, and it reads, creating a sustainable transportation system that allows people to take their mode of choice to access necessities, opportunities, recreation, and each other. We have several objectives here, including balancing vehicular capacity with fiscal, environmental, social, or economic outcomes, and that includes policy language on constrained, deficient roadways. As I mentioned in the beginning, we do have language on establishing and maintaining multimodal level of service standards. New development shall provide mobility fees to mitigate its impact on the multimodal network, update the corridor preservation plan, and ensuring adequate multimodal corridors. And there is an emphasis on connectivity policy language here under this objective. We have several objectives on supporting and collaborating with HART to increase frequency to higher density and intensity areas, as well as transit-dependent communities. And finally, building a comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian system for additional trip purposes beyond just recreational use. Next slide, please. Our fifth goal is to build a smart system that utilizes technology and strategies to improve safety, efficiency, and reliability for all modes of transportation and to meet the needs of all users. Our objectives here include addressing deficient roadways and safety of all users for enhanced traffic flow through technological solutions, modernizing the county's traffic management center to monitor and optimize the multimodal system, increasing person trips, and reducing vehicle miles traveled through transportation demand management, or TDM. And TDM includes strategies such as shifting from a single occupancy vehicle to incentivizing van pool or car pool, as well as other strategies such as flex time or telecommuting, as I'm doing right now, implementing comprehensive multimodal parking and curb space management programs. So the curb space management part of this is when you have maybe a highly active area with a lot of Uber and Lyft drop-off or pickup, or grocery delivery or pickup, that sort of thing. We have an objective on pursuing corridor widening strategically after lower-cost alternatives have been considered, improving multimodal connections to major military installations, tourist destinations, airport, port, ferry, rail, and intermodal terminals. And finally, as I mentioned in the beginning, we do have an objective on monitoring and supporting emerging technologies and strategies for transportation facilities. Again, this includes everything from Uber and Lyft, which we call transportation networking companies, or TNCs, to e-bikes and scooters, to even connected and autonomous vehicles as that technology becomes more available. Next slide, please. Our sixth and final goal is to ensure compatibility with context, and it reads to provide a multimodal transportation system that supports planned future land use, respects historical and cultural assets, supports the identity of the surrounding community, and protects the natural environment. We have several objectives here, including designing roadways appropriate to the future land use category that they traverse. And this points back to the context classification definitions included in a table in the mobility section, as well as the context classifications map that I mentioned earlier. The graphic to the right also shows transects, which is similar to the context classification, showing that you will, the roadway design will be based on the different surrounding land use of the road, for example, rural, suburban, urban. We have an objective on minimizing adverse impacts to residential and commercial neighborhoods and environmentally sensitive land, protecting neighborhoods from adverse impacts of through traffic and speeds while providing reasonable access to and from those areas, and finally, constructing complete streets to achieve safety, comfort, and aesthetics for all expected users and modes. Next slide, please. I know this is probably a bit small, but this is the draft context classification map that relates to those definitions and that objective that I just showed you on the previous slide. This is available on our project page, so you would, of course, be able to zoom in a little bit more and take a better look at this. Next slide, please. As I mentioned previously, we do have this implementation and monitoring section. This is for guidance documents and standards that are forthcoming from county staff, and they will be, it will be updated as these documents become available. So as you're aware, we're in the July cycle with the mobility section of the Comprehensive Plan, and county staff have several in-progress projects, including the Complete Streets Guidebook, the Transportation Design Manual, Transportation Technical Manual, and the Quarter Preservation Plan, which will be updated on this page as they become available. Next slide, please. We do have our mobility section project page, where you can review the draft language, see what's new versus existing, and compare the existing adopted language with the proposed. This is primarily through what we call crosswalks that are available under the Supporting Documents portion of the page at the very bottom. We also have, you can review previous presentations and other background information. We have our upcoming meeting dates, as well as our deadline for public comment, which is currently October 15. Our upcoming meetings include, after this, a November 8 public hearing with the Planning Commission, and then another public hearing with you all on December 16, I believe. And of course, there's the link for the mobility section project page there. Next slide, please. So we did want to touch on our public outreach, which is currently still ongoing. You'll note here, we have several outreach and opportunities for comment that we've already completed or that are ongoing. So as I previously mentioned, public comment is available on our project page through October 15. We presented a high-level overview to the Agricultural Economic Development Council, or AEDC, on August 10. On August 18 and September 1, we presented to the Livable Roadways Committee. At that first meeting, we had an announcement, and on September 1, we had a full presentation. Similarly, we had announcements and presentations for both the Citizens Advisory Committee, as well as the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Those full presentations are coming up for both the CAC and the BPA. We had two virtual public meetings open to the public on September 9 and September 23. Those are recorded and also available on our project page. And upcoming, we are going on October 18 to the HART Strategic Planning and External Relations Committee, as well as on October 22, reaching out to the Hillsborough Citizens Advisory Committee and the Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinating Board. Next slide, please. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes my presentation on the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Mobility Section text amendment. I am available to answer questions, and my co-lead, Rich Clarendon, is here as well. I know that we also have county staff available on the line for questions. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any, I'm sorry, I don't have the participants up here. Oh, here we go. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. The congestion that is in our county, blocking our roads, lowering our citizens' quality of life, is a frequent topic in our emailboxes in our county, and widely viewed as, well, I mean, surveys have shown it's the biggest complaint. It's an impediment to economic development. And it's widely viewed correctly, I think, as a failure of planning and growth management in our county over the last couple of decades. How does this mobility element change things and change the direction and improve our planning processes to turn away from the mistakes of the past? I mean, you look at the traffic jams in our county, particularly in South County, and it's undeniable that we've been doing it wrong. Okay. So how does this mobility element begin to help mobility? Is there anything new in here that will change the way that anyone reviews development applications? Will the Planning Commission staff take anything in this element and review zoning applications differently than they've been doing, or comp plan amendment applications differently than they've been reviewing, and provide different input to the county commissioners for their decisions? Is there, is there anything here that will have Development Services staff saying, you know, no, you can't, you can't do that because that's the same thing that was being done, and now we have a new mobility element update that addresses those things we've been doing wrong that have resulted in the congestion on our roads? And so now we have this mobility element that has things in it that will ensure that new development does not continue adding to the problem of congestion?
I can take a crack at that, Commissioner. This is Rich Clarendon with the Planning Commission staff, also the TPO Assistant Director. Yeah, so I think there's a couple different answers to that question. One has to do with making sure that we have a better network of roads, so that we don't have situations where we have subdivisions and larger developments that are connected, you know, one way in and one way out only from a major road network, have a more of a complete network of, and hierarchy of roads, so that you have a grid system which diffuses traffic, and you're not relying on, you know, a single major road to take the burden. I think that's, that's one solution that really hasn't been exploited enough. I think the other has to do with catching up technologically with our road system to make sure that we're taking advantage of signal timing coordination, better intersection operations. And the last thing I would say is that part of that has to do with making sure that we have a full multimodal system where transit has an opportunity to compete to an advantage. So you might have, for example, Q jump lanes to make sure that buses can get through congested bottlenecks faster than they can do, than they can do now. You know, it doesn't do much good for transit if it's caught in the same congestion as everybody else. So I think these are some of the things that we see coming forward with this element. But you're right, it's a persistent problem. And I think the other thing is, you know, implementation and funding is critical. Doesn't really do much good if we have a plan and we don't have the resources to implement it.
Madam Chair, can I follow up?
Sure.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Clarendon. A couple of things. So you mentioned connectivity, and I agree, and I believe this whole board has expressed our agreement with your idea that connectivity is an important piece of alleviating the congestion in our county. And so in our briefings before this, I pointed out that connectivity was not one of the goals. It was, you know, there were some policies mixed into this update, but if it's the first thing that you reference when you talk about addressing congestion, and it's something that has been discussed and this board has been prioritizing as a way of addressing congestion, I think it should be elevated to one of the goals of our transportation element, connectivity. And I would ask, and Madam Chair, I got two questions. This is one about connectivity. I would, I would ask that we, it's nice to, I mean, I don't disagree with anything that's in this transportation element, right? There's lofty aspirational language, but I need to see where is the rubber meeting the road? Where is this going to change the review process and change, you know, the way that we are addressing mobility and transportation and improve congestion, and at least do no harm and not make it any worse? So how will this comp plan update in the mobility section make sure that we are requiring connectivity, zoning by zoning, development by development, subdivision by subdivision, so that these things don't, what, I mean, what's been happening is, we all say we like connectivity, but the reviewing agencies don't, don't put enough on there. I have to say, Development Services has been, has been putting pressure on there. But I'd like to see the planners of the Planning Commission saying, this subdivision needs to have connections, or we're not gonna, we're not going to say it's consistent with the comp plan. We're gonna find it inconsistent with our goals of connectivity if it doesn't, if it doesn't achieve connectivity, if it has, is, you know, all blocked off, but one entrance and a lot of little dead-end streets inside, all pouring off, because the neighbors aren't going to want through traffic. So I want to know if this, a goal of connectivity could help the Planning Commission find such things inconsistent, so the pressure's not on the county commission. This commission's been holding the line as tough as we can. But, you know, when we're gone, I would like to think that this comp plan element is going to assure these goals and what you've identified as one of the top ways to address congestion by having some teeth here, that our planners will require connectivity. Do you feel like that's achieved here, or do you, do you agree that maybe it should be a goal rather than some separate policies? What do you think?
If I could respond for just a minute, I think we absolutely can take a look at whether or not some of those policies should be elevated into a goal. I think that certainly, given the feelings of this board, that might be very appropriate to have it, not just as an objective in some policies. I would like to just be clear on the record that the Planning Commission staff has found inconsistent numerous, over my 20 years, developments for not having connections and not meeting our existing connectivity policies. And so I don't, I just want to sort of defend the team that does those reviews of rezonings because they have regularly found things inconsistent when they have not provided the connections. What might benefit is us having some, as you said, stronger policy language that perhaps gives some guidance to, like we do sort of in the Wy Mama area, to the frequency and of the connections, so that there's a little bit better benchmark as to how often, you know, is two connections enough in a subdivision, or, you know, that sort of thing. We're usually looking to make sure there's, to the degree possible, one on each side of a subdivision, if the opportunity exists. Think, you know, one of the things I know you all have seen is that there are a lot of challenges in, not only that we have wetlands in certain areas, and we don't want to intrude on those, but also that some of the past development has sort of shut itself off from, and making the new connections very difficult to make. But absolutely, I think this is something we can look at and see whether or not it should be a goal. I think I'm seeing, hearing direction that it should be. But welcome, any of the other commissioners, if you feel differently, please, this is the opportunity to weigh in, so that we walk away with, from this workshop with some clear direction. Thank you.
Thanks. And if I could just wrap up, a couple of other things that I think we have opportunity to do here is to learn from all our discussions and everything we've been learning and working through with the RP2 and WVR2 plans and priorities, and prioritize internal trip capture. plans and priorities and, and prioritize internal trip capture, community trip capture and, and timeliness of development as a, as a, as a reviewing criteria for new growth, to make sure that, you know, this, our county is doing great work in turning the direction to begin prioritizing providing infrastructure across, you know, roads being just part of that, but water and schools, of course. And, and we've raised impact fees to begin having a, a funding source moving forward. So, you know, I know the impetus is there, but we, we also need to look at the timing of when growth comes on and, and say, maybe it's, maybe it's not never for this subdivision, but it's, it's not now. It's, it's, give us a minute to, to put in the roads and provide the water infrastructure and, and stuff like that. So, so timing and trip capture, I think are, are other aspects that need to be addressed here. I've talked to staff, just so the board knows about the other idea that we've, we've discussed in, in other areas about the equity of toll roads and managed, managed lanes. And, and so I, I believe they're beefing up that language in the equity section to make sure that managed lanes and toll roads would be, you know, reviewed in light of that according to our, our plan. And I, I'm gonna be putting more attention to how the context-based classification is being used in here. So I'll, I'll, I'll end, but leave that question and hope that somebody will answer. How is the context-based classification being? How is that going to, to help congestion and planning of growth with mobility to, to fix our, our mobility plans and, and do a better job of providing mobility as we grow and not, you know, not, not having growth continue to, to degrade mobility for our citizens?
Thank you. And Commissioner Overman, you recognized?
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Smith, because there were several things that you commented on that I have observed as well. Jill, there's one, I wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for the equity element. Because if we use that as the first principle of decision-making, it's going to change much of what is also included in all of these policies. Because it does, it does take into consideration context, ways that we can address, maybe not, I mean, in a reparative way, you know, what we've done in communities as we readdress the growth needs and address existing roadways that have the challenges that Commissioner Smith, you know, just described. But also to set the, the tone, working with our development partners and our, our roadway partners, i.e. FDOT, as well as our, our city partners in their land use. Having the implementation and monitoring section really ferret out the transportation technical manual and seeing and identifying where in Hillsborough County, these are the standards that need to be met. And, you know, it's inside the county, not only with the city of Tampa, but also, you know, the county as well as FDOT. Because what we're, what I've experienced, of what I've witnessed, is when we're multi-generationally fixing a problem. Whether it's, you know, something HART's trying to fix, Communities are trying to fix, FDOT's trying to fix, the city of Tampa may be trying to fix. In our land use as well as in our road design, that makes it so complex that everyone's pointing at each other and we're not getting there. And that's unfortunate because it delays the process and creates inconsistencies that our citizens are frustrated with, and I think we all are as well. So I'm glad to see that this, this portion of the policy has the framework for addressing those issues. But to address the capital needs, there is a significant amount of capital improvement planning that is necessary when we're looking at the overall system. And I think it's critically important that in our comprehensive planning, in our tip planning, when we're addressing our transportation improvement plan lists specifically for each of the jurisdictions that are submitting, you know, a prioritized list, that that prioritized list needs to reflect this mobility element and our priorities, so that we are addressing those issues. And I think that's critically important because to, to Commissioner Smith's points, I believe, is, you know, when we're looking at each individual projects for a land use permit and application, but we're not necessarily addressing the standards that are established within this policy. How does it impact and support connectivity? How does it impact and support Vision Zero? How does it take advantage of, you know, it's a technology that we have now to improve safety and as well as move people through an area safely? Rather than a, I'll give you an example. Rather than a policy that says, well, we're not gonna lower the speed limits because that's what, you know, the road is designed to go this fast. And that doesn't necessarily correspond with a goal or with a policy. But because the, the standard, the technical manual says, you know, to lower with what people typically travel through. But to safely address that community's needs, they need 35 instead of 45. Or this, there's a school in the area and we're prohibited from putting a certain modalities of safety and Vision Zero elements in place because of, you know, there's, it just doesn't seem appropriate by whatever governing body, that's a problem. And we have to figure out, one, how to match up the policy with the technical manuals so that developers, when they're working on it, as well as our state when readdressing the redesign of a, whether it's a collector arterial or, or a main highway, that we're taking into consideration those, this, these policies every step of the way. And, and then recognizing the capital costs associated with making those policies real and working for our communities and for our citizens. The, um, this timeline on those technical updates would be important to know or have some understanding of what that is going to do in terms of this adoption. I know that there are several technical manuals, you know, with the cities and the county and the state that are all in flux right now, whether it's in the land use element or the transportation element. But I think it's important for us to recognize or have an understanding of how quickly those things can be adjusted to these policies. And we have a Complete Streets guideline that's gonna be presented to the B O C C soon. Is that, is that timed out? Do we have a date anticipated for that?
I think I would probably have to defer to John Patrick or some, someone from county staff who could address that. That's, you know, we, we have reviewed drafts. It's very promising. I don't know when it's actually coming forward. So JP?
Yeah, Commissioners, good morning. So the, we are working on the Complete Street Guidebook, which basically takes what is in the context-based classification and start looking at how it fits each of the community and the cross-sections, which, Commissioner Overman, you guys, you guys are talking about, how it relates to the community? How can you make it safer? What is appropriate speed limits in those areas? So those are the discussions that happens in the Complete Street Guidebook. We are working on it. We are coordinating with the Planning Commission, the NPO, FDOT, TM. So we are working with the partners and hope to bring you, bring it to you in January as soon as this mobility element is adopted. So without the context-based classification, your Complete Street Guidebook will be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. So, so first thing is, first, this comp plan has to be adopted. So we are hoping to bring it back to you, probably in a workshop setting, so that we have time to discuss and go through this, probably early next year, January, February, perhaps.
Well, thank you for that and I appreciate, excuse me, I appreciate that. And the reason, I'm, I'm very proud of the work that has been done for, for Y MAMA and RP2. Many of the community benefits that were discussed and considered, you know, do sync up with this mobility plan. And for example, recently, there was a ribbon cutting or groundbreaking, I'm sorry, for an affordable housing concept. And I happened to catch the landscape designer and said, you know, we've got language within various different communities for affordable, for housing in general, where density is created, i.e. a TOD zone or the benefits of having transit associated with a affordable housing complex on a road, where benefits are considered, for example, you know, a community garden or the community space or the provision for a community center. And we're starting to see that come in development plans in our land use. How, how that actually serves our, our trip capture isn't necessarily obvious, but it is there. So I, I think we're, I think we're getting really close. But I think if we are able to make sure the technical manuals sync up with this, not only at the local levels, but also at the state level. Excuse me, we can get where we're going. Does, um, does this, because of the, the, the implementation and assessment of conditions section of our goals here, where we're looking at our, our freight areas, our port, our transit and, and multi-use. Do we have incorporated or are we going to provide feedback to the state, the update of the state freight plan that's coming? I mean, we've got a, a major freight study that apparently is in the works that the NPO advised, the NPO, TPO board recently. And I'd like to make sure that, that they're aware of what Hillsborough County would like to have in the way of a mobility's framework for that work as well. Does it, you know, when we have major corridors that our freight travel on, that also intersect our communities and that lays the priority for FDOT's development of certain road structures. I think it's important to see how that intersection needs to be clearly vetted. And then we have a good capital improvement plan to be able to address those needs. But I, I like what I see here. Linking housing and transportation and land use is, is one of my biggest goals. And, you know, how we can work with the various different partners that are doing that, whether it be the county, the city or the state, I think is critically important that we bring those silos down and make sure that there's good integration with all of those goals. Because that's actually what our citizens want. And that might set us up for a better capital investment. And also to make sure that we generate a, a financial plan that can actually make it happen. And there, that's where I've seen the biggest disconnect is, is we don't, you know, we can plan all we want, but if we don't have a, a capital structure for funding it, it's, it makes it very difficult to, to avoid continuing to disappoint our citizens. So I'll stop there.
Okay. Um, I'm just gonna, there's no other commissioners. I don't see that the hands raised. I'm just gonna, there are very good comments made and there's a lot in here and I haven't fully explored it all, but I'll just put, put a few things, pretty much some emphasis on what the other commissioners have talked about. But one thing I don't wanna lose is equity. That's been talked about a lot, but equity of toll roads. The congestion pricing frame is really just to serve the wealthy. It's to only serve those who can afford to use it when you do congestion management, or as I call it surge pricing. Because the intent of it is to have fewer people use the road and only the people with that, who can afford to. And very frequently up to $10 for, for just a 10 mile road. That's happened in the state of Florida and other, in Washington, it can go DC outside that area. The average, well, I shouldn't, it's not the average, but the toll that it goes up to for 10 miles is $34. And that's just one way. So you can pay, you know, $70 a day to commute on that. And I'll say what, what does provide at least a measure of equity is just if you're gonna charge a toll, just a straight out flat toll. That is, you know, a dollar or two that everyone can afford to use that lane. And I'm also a little concerned that, as I understand it, the bridge now goes across, has four lanes of general through traffic. But when it goes to West Shore, that turns into three lanes and the congestion management lane. And I, you know, I look at that again as that is, to me, a very serious equity concern. So I would like to have that somewhere in, in our, our policy explicitly. The other thing is, you know, and I think there's been a lot said about that. Obviously, this is what road through, context for road design. I know that in the, in this work, anyone on this call is probably, or in this virtual is probably pretty aware of that. There's, the public, I think, is, is not aware of that. It's kind of like, you know, if you hop into a sports car that has hot, you know, high speeds, it's a kind of an expectation about how you drive it. And there's a lot of commentary about that. But if you're, for instance, driving a paratransit van, you're probably thinking a little different about how you're gonna drive. And our streets are the same and so many of them have been designed and send a signal to the drivers. I know this is what we're trying to look at here and think about when we do this. But send a signal that, you know, you drive the same on the interstate as you drive down Florida Avenue in town. So, you know, I think obviously this is gonna be extraordinarily important. And as Commissioner Smith said, you know, this is aspirational. It was, it would be wonderful to move through and really start to look at, you know, we, we built decades, decades and decades of poor design and that's why, poor street design, poor road design. And that's of course why we have the second highest per capita death of pedestrians and bicyclists of anywhere in the nation year after year after year, and why Florida has seven out of 10 of the most dangerous places to walk or bicycle. Because it's so important that we start to deal with this. I just, that's, that's just in keeping as we go through this and thinking, thinking about the Vision Zero and, and how we bring these together, the concepts of connectivity. And I'm just, I, I know this is all, all through there, but I, I wanted to just emphasize again that I'm where, where I'd like to, to see it be going and stay. I do have this concern, there was in the beginning something about dependent transit. And I'd like to just get rid of that language explicitly. Dependent and choice are, have been recognized as being really, you know, concerning in terms of how they label things. There's really, there, that is not really appropriate language. You have really high ridership areas. And I think emphasizing transit on already high ridership areas. You have people that when it becomes more available and more frequent, can be on it more often and can use it for more trips. And then the third group that you kind of have are just the commuters that And then the third group that you kind of have are just the commuters that use it only for commuting from far out. And quite frankly, there's been a lot written about the equity of all of that, because we are subsidizing the the far out commuter parking rides. A lot of times, they have premium bus rides that there, sometimes there is a higher charge, and the bus transportation provided, the transit is premium transit that's much more plush and looks different than the regular buses. But they're also subsidized at a much higher rate, and have to be, because of the nature of the commute. For instance, the long, long bus commute is a typically $30 subsidy, whereas the in-town, in dense transit areas, the shorter routes are maybe like a $3 or $4 subsidy. So I'm just pointing that out in terms of equity and thoughts of equity, and I'm not sure how that is in there, you know, moves in there. But again, I, you know, I want to look at providing greater transit to high ridership areas where we, because we want to move people in as much as possible to have the opportunity to use transit and and look away from the use of the the cars particularly in very dense areas, in in dense areas. And I'm wondering about, too, a goal, and I'm not sure even where, but reducing per capita vehicle miles traveled, V M T, as an overall goal. Across the, we we probably, across the country, vehicle miles traveled are dropping. They were dropping for the first time in history, then they kind of rose up again, and they're plateauing out, general vehicle miles traveled. It's not quite probably as happening here because of our increasing population all the time. However, there is a lot of evidence that per capita vehicle miles are dropping, particularly with younger people who are preferring, in in COVID, of course, we have to throw out these years, and hopefully we'll get back to to what we need, but or to what, you know, a different scenario. But I'm just wondering about a goal of dropping per capita vehicle miles traveled as an overall way of, you know, we want to increase walkability and trip capture and all that. And so I think that that and and also high, you know, more service in high ridership areas, because those are people that will use and have more ability to connect their entire lives through transit rather than having to, you know, only use it to get to work. So I'll just put that in there and thanks, thank you for this. And I see Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I couldn't help but but hone in on the comments that you made just a moment ago about, you know, that you hope that the the data will get us there, get us where we need to be. I don't remember exactly how it was worded, but I just want to say to staff that that I want all of this work now and in the future, as we're working on the comp plan, to be data driven. And if the COVID pandemic has driven people back out into the suburbs and rural areas, and it's it's driving people away from mass transit, and increasing people's desire to ride in a private automobile, then we should support that, the road infrastructure and everything else. I don't know how the data is gonna gonna shake out as we look forward. Maybe COVID has been an anomaly, maybe not. Maybe COVID is gonna, you know, have some some changes that are going to be with us for quite some time to come. So I just want to caution everybody to make sure that everything we're doing is is completely data driven.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't at all asking to have them manage the data in a way that would reflect what I wanted, but just, I know that these have been unusual two years, even for driving. We've seen drops and rises and and things like that. So I wasn't at all ask, I definitely want data driven information. So I just want to clarify that there was, I was, when I I talked about looking towards, you know, if we're looking at vehicle miles traveled, looking towards a a future where where we could have better use of our transit in our roads. And I see that Katrina has her hand raised.
Good morning again, everyone. There's been a lot of good discussion here and a lot of good feedback. I just wanted to point out a few policies for your reference, and of course, we can take this feedback into consideration and and look at the policy language a bit more. For the comments related to tolling, the policy language there is Policy 124, I believe, looks at that. So if you're interested, that policy is available in your packet. Commissioner Overman, you had mentioned freight a bit, and we do have a freight objective related to freight Objective 5.6. There are some policy languages, policy language under that related to freight and and the county. As far as vehicle miles traveled, we do have that addressed in Objective 5.3 related to that. Of course, we can take a look if, you know, we'd like to adjust that at all, but there is a lot of policy language there. And that, those are the few things that I did want to mention, just to point out those policies. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just tag on to that, this is Rich Clarendon again. And thank you, Katrina, for being quick on the draw in terms of finding the right references. But I wanted to go back to something that Commissioner Kemp mentioned about reducing vehicle miles of travel. That is a an aspiration, I think, that we all have. But I'll be completely honest, it's a very difficult thing to actually implement without having a much more robust multimodal system than what we have today. I mean, the way you can reduce vehicle miles of travel is by making sure, and I think you referenced this in your comments, that, you know, you need to concentrate population in a way that makes it easier for people to get around by something other than jumping into their single occupant vehicle. So that would be, you know, a multimodal transit district, if you will. And I think that's part of the emphasis of the another section of the plan, which is going to address linking land use, transportation, and housing much more explicitly than what we have today. We don't have that here in the mobility section, but it's very closely related to it. And the last thing I will say is that the, one of the multimodal standards for transit is the constant is just that, is to make sure that the land use complements transit and vice versa, so that you put transit where it has the best chances of succeeding. So I I just wanted to sort of piggyback on what Katrina had to say and and tell you, I think we've given this a lot of thought. We've gotten a lot of input from a lot of different quarters, FDOT, HART, the Transportation Disadvantage Program. I know you said you'd like to get rid of the language transit dependent. I know exactly what you're saying, but I think for for certain policies, certain people, you need to have some protection. You all are the coordinated, the community transportation coordinator for the transportation disadvantaged system, and we do have policies referencing that. So that's the only place I could find that 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 language actually pops up.
Oh, well, I saw it on the screen this morning as one of the, and and if you want to say transportation disadvantaged in terms of that or paratransit, but I think it's widely thought of as broader than that. And I, when I saw it there, I Googled it very quickly, and there weren't, there were a lot of national references that weren't very kind about it.
Understood, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. And very quickly, if we're talking about the importance of multimodal and public transportation and transit as a way of taking cars off the road and reducing, reducing traffic, and as as the other commissioners have have talked about, reducing car traffic specifically, then I would ask everybody to look at the new Objective 3.2 that says, the objective is to support the maintenance of public transportation assets, comma, recognizing that the Hillsborough Area Regional Transit Authority, HART, is financially responsible for maintaining the transit system. And that's a new objective. I don't, it's not that I, I just don't, I don't think we need to agree or disagree of who's financially responsible. I don't think it belongs in our comprehensive plan to specify that who, that HART is financially responsible for maintaining the transit system. It kind of takes away from our working together to so to do the objective, support the maintenance of public transportation assets and support, as as Mr. Clarendon has said a couple of times, that we, what we're sorely lacking is a robust public transit system. I I don't see any reason to include in our comp plan any restrictions to how that might be supported, and that's how I read this objective. I just don't think it's necessary in the long range, 20 year comprehensive plan. It might be the case right now, but doesn't doesn't need to restrict us in that way, especially as we are, you know, embarking on a transit, several transit projects from the streetcar to the ferry that we're getting grant money for. So I would, I would, I think that piece about HART being financially responsible for the whole transit system could be taken out.
Thank you. And, you know, to your point, I, I want to give you an example of where getting a clear identification of policies and not only policies but specifications, connecting it to land use, is critically important. Because, for example, HART is in the process of trying to pass, it works through four studies to address primarily two corridors. We've got, you know, the the HART T O D pilot project, we've got the arterial B R T project, we've got the streetcar project, and we have the Heisman Mobility Study. So we've got four different elements and studies to address the complexity of primarily two roads, Florida, little bit of dogleg there, and Fowler. And it's been something that's been on the table that we've been actually moving again to, you know, for 10 years, and still don't have an agreement on whether or not Fowler should be designed as a boulevard that is fully accessed and served by walkability and transit and in land use that actually supports, you know, promoting use of the boulevard as a means of getting around through mobility and not just cars with major parking lots in front of the properties that that are being developed in that area. And and then fighting the war that we have with Florida Avenue, trying to actually create space for moving a B R T. It, you know, the, the, this plan, these policies, really do set the stage for being able to address those conflicts when it comes to specification design standards and and in a goal to actually create connectivity in a community that is growing rapidly. And also has is a great footprint for increased density as well as affordable housing. So if if we can get this moving forward, maybe it would only take two studies to do it instead of four or 10 or or 20 years to get it done. But at the end of the day, you know, the the goals that are in these policies, for the most part, for the most part, do address the disconnect that causes this T O, this process that HART's trying to do, where transit becomes a real tool for the communities and between two large economic centers. You know, the the USF hospital complex, science complex that is growing in that area, and then the job centers downtown, connecting those two job centers effectively in a relatively dense area shouldn't be that hard. But having these policies need to incorporate how to use context for delivering a product to our citizens and us for approval. But it takes, again, to your point, Commissioner Smith, about the reliability and responsibility for funding. It, you know, just because it's a transit asset doesn't mean it advocates, I think, county commissioners and our and our other governmental partners on collaborating, on making sure that the policy is adhered to and can and can be implemented collaboratively through funding sources, whether that be state, local, or federal, and really pursuing a way of using all the tools that we have to be able to get these kinds of policies adopted and implemented in a way that creates safety in our community. I'll stop there.
And just to, I guess, just because that has come up, I should say, because I've done quite a lot of research on this over time, trying to understand why HART is so starved for resources compared to any other transit system in the nation. And the Pinellas County transit system is far better off than ours because they have a three quarter mil and they're one third the size. So even they are far better, we have a half mil here of our ad valorem tax. But Pinellas and Hillsborough are the only two in, only two transit systems in the state of Florida that I can tell that are actually totally dependent on ad valorem tax, and it was set extraordinarily low, cannot handle supporting a transit system and has been, that is why, compared to any other budgets around the state for transit systems for any of the other counties, ours is very extraordinarily low, as we've said, something with equal to Sheboygan, Wisconsin, and and the other, other transit systems around the state of Florida have the gas tax for transit, have, some of them have now passed the one cent sales taxes being used primarily for transit, but as well, hundreds of millions of dollars of general revenue funds from the county countywide funds in have have been used to support transit. And I'm talking about annually, hundred, more than 100 million, and and still so in Orange County, Orlando, in Miami-Dade, in Broward, in Palm Beach, I believe in Jacksonville, Duval, I mean, Leon, Gainesville, all those places. So I just would like to to point that out, just when we're talking about funding, I think it's important to realize why, why we are are so resource starved here. Okay, I don't see any other comments, and I think with that, we can move to the next item.
Great, thank you. This was fabulous discussion and a lot of great input for us. The next item on the agenda is the private property rights element. We had a workshop with you all in August where we brought a base, a basic private property rights element to you all that met the requirements of the new state statute. And Mark Hudson is here today to share our review of the Thousand Friends of Florida element and our bringing back that policy approach to you all. So, Mark, if you're ready.
Good, good morning, Commissioners. Mark Hudson, planning commission staff. If HTV could share my PowerPoint, I appreciate it. There we go. And if I could add the next slide. share my PowerPoint, I appreciate it. There we go. And if I could add the next slide. Melissa already mentioned this, but this is an alternative version that we're bringing back to you of the property rights element based on our discussion at the last workshop. And as she already mentioned, this is primarily based on the model element that was developed by the Thousand Friends of Florida. Again, this is required by House Bill 59, which became effective in July, and it's designed to ensure property rights are considered in our decision-making processes. And this applies not only to, of course, the counties, but all the municipalities throughout the state of Florida. And just to remind you, there are some implications if we delay the approval of a property rights element, that plan amendments that were initiated, either public or private, after July 1st of this year, their timeline for approval would be inhibited. If I could add the next slide. The model element done by Thousand Friends of Florida, their first section is Goal 1, Objective 1, and Policies 1.1 to 1.4. And that, of course, identifies the specific property rights, rights that will be respected in Hillsborough County. And this is very, very similar to the previous version we brought to you a few weeks ago. It meets the requirements of House Bill 59, and again, is very similar to the language that we shared with you last week, based on our version that met those minimum requirements. If I could add the next slide. So I'll go on to the other two sections that were beyond what is the minimum requirements of House Bill 59. And the first one is Objective 2, and also Policies 2.1 to 2.4. And these identify the rights of people, how they participate in the local decision-making processes. And in Hillsborough County, these are primarily addressed today in your Plan Amendment Procedures Manual and Land Development Code. Now, of course, the element for the Thousand Friends of Florida addresses these issues broadly across the state, and maybe there are some jurisdictions that do not address these issues. But we do address these public participation aspects in our decision-making process in Hillsborough County, primarily through those two documents. Of course, now, based on this Thousand Friends of Florida version, we would also incorporate aspects of them into the comprehensive plan directly. If I could add the next slide. I just wanted to explain to you a little bit what the impacts of, or what the aspects of those objective and policies are. I will say they're in a strike-through, underlined version in your document, and of course, if you have any questions on that, feel free to interrupt me. The public participation process that would be incorporated in a comprehensive plan based on the recommendations in that model element would affect how we address those issues through plan amendments and zonings. In discussions, particularly with Hillsborough County staff, we felt that decisions made on less far-reaching and significant actions like variances and like were already adequately addressed in the Land Development Code. So we're limiting that to plan amendments and zonings, and leaving those less significant issues that you have to do on a day-to-day basis to the current public participation requirements in your code. The Thousand Friends of Florida version uses the term affected person, and we felt that that was too narrow. We've actually broadened that out more and describe it now as interested party. We wouldn't want to exclude someone from participating in discussion because they live, you know, beyond a certain distance from a plan amendment or even in an adjacent county. We want to hear commentary from all citizens, and that's why we broaden that term even more than what the Thousand Friends of Florida recommended. There are some specific requirements that are noted in the Thousand Friends of Florida model element, talking about speaking times. Of course, we do include language in this proposal to ensure that parties have the opportunity to be heard at public hearings. However, we did modify that to give discretion to the board and county commissioners on the allotted speaking times, based on the number of participants and the time that has been allotted in your hearings, rather than constraining the board with a very specific policy in your comprehensive plan. If I could add the next slide. Also, this was lacking before, but we are including a direct link between the comprehensive plan and your Procedures Manual and Land Development Code. So if anyone is reading the comprehensive plan and wants to see how to participate in either the process of a plan amendment or rezoning, they would know to make that link and also look at these other documents. The Thousand Friends of Florida version does not talk about, you know, other requirements beyond noticing adjacent property owners through the mail. And we felt that those were important because we do get a lot of public participation utilizing these other mechanisms for notice. So we did include language in addition related to signage, legal advertisements, and the posting on your websites in Hillsborough County. And also, there are some requirements dealing with pre-application meetings, which tend to be somewhat of a dry affair, dealing with, you know, process and application fees and things of that nature. And we felt it was more important to actually require the applicants to conduct a neighborhood meeting, meet with the neighbors. We think that that is a much more impactful and meaningful way for the neighbors to interact with a potential project than actually just participating in a pre-application meeting, again, which tends to be somewhat of a dry affair. So based on this policy and plan for a zoning or for land use plan amendment, the applicant would have to meet with the neighbors and report back to the staff on what occurred. And of course, the staff has the opportunity to participate in that directly as well. If I could add the next slide. The last objective, Objective 3, and Policies, Policy 3.1 to 3.3, identify how you actually make those decisions, you know, more of the procedural aspects of those. They particularly relate to plan amendments and zonings. Again, this is articulated in your Plan Amendment Procedures Manual and zoning code, but based on your desire to codify this in a comprehensive plan based on that model element, we are bringing those policies in this version into the comprehensive plan in this new element. If I could add the next slide. So there would be a policy in your plan that signifies that you have to, when you look at a plan amendment and you wish to approve it, that you have to have a majority plus one. That is not typical for other jurisdictions. It's a simple majority in many other places. But being a very important decision and far-reaching and long-lasting, it's a majority plus one. And for zoning decisions, it requires four affirmative votes, and that will now be stipulated in your comprehensive plan. And finally, it is important for citizens to be able to review all the materials with sufficient time to give you public input. And now there's policy provisions based on this version that requires that those materials be available. And if the applicant tries to introduce new materials or alternative proposals at the last moment, the hearing would have to be continued until such time as the public in particular, but even you as commissioners have the opportunity to fully digest the ramifications of that new proposal. If I could add the next slide. We do plan, we've, of course, taken the previous version to the planning commission and got their consistency finding. We plan to do that as well with this alternative version on October 4th. We have a transmittal hearing scheduled with you on October 21st. I did have a brief conversation with representatives of the Department of Economic Opportunity yesterday, and they indicated to me that they've had some meetings with Thousand Friends of Florida just yesterday, and they expect that the Thousand Friends of Florida will be offering some alternative language based on those discussions and an updated model element. I'm hopeful that that becomes available between now and October 21st, and we can advise you if there are any significant edits that are being recommended by that group. And then, of course, we anticipate an adoption hearing in front of you on December 9th. And if I could add the next slide. And we do plan on bringing back to you the two elements to you for your consideration at that transmittal hearing, and that will give you the opportunity to decide which one you wish to transmit up to the Department of Economic Opportunity for their consideration. That concludes my brief presentation. I'm here, and of course, Melissa's here to try to respond to any questions you may have.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And many thanks to the planning commission for this rework of including the Thousand Friends element per our direction or comments at the original meeting, and for then very thoughtfully changing interested party, or affected party to interested party. One of the ways that our planning commission really shines through the years is in community outreach and involving the community in our planning process and bringing that forward. And as a citizen who has gone to many planning commission hearings and county commission hearings on comp plan amendments and rezonings and Land Development Code stuff, I can testify to the planning commission's staff accessibility and hard work in helping our citizens navigate these sometimes complicated processes. And so I think that experience shows in what you've done, understanding what the Thousand Friends of Florida meant and how to put that in the Hillsborough County context. Interested party is very important because in comp plan amendments or in even single rezoning, there's sometimes been a push against citizens participating in the process if they don't live right next door to the development or the proposal. And, you know, I've felt that myself when I'm representing, say, Sierra Club in bringing input to a land use decision that could impact our environment, our wildlife habitat, elements that are in our Land Development Code and in our plan, our wetlands protections. And I think we do need to hear from citizens, recognizing that all our citizens are taxpayers and residents who support our natural resources, our ELAP lands, our wetlands, our EPC, and have an interest, a bona fide interest in protecting our environmental resources. Also, another example is I have worked with people across the county. People in Keystone have come together with people in Ruskin to go to the county commission or the planning commission to address a land use item that might, say, have impacts to setting precedence for how we interpret community plans in general. So something that's being proposed in Keystone might actually have ramifications for how the Ruskin community plan is later interpreted and implemented. And so, you know, as a citizen of Ruskin, I have an interest, and I'm affected by the decision that might be made on this Keystone issue, if it changes the way or sets precedence for the way we're talking about community plans in general, and vice versa. So, you know, I just lay that out as ways that I've thought about interested parties and who has a right to a seat at the table of our land use decisions. People far from a development might be impacted by the traffic that that development is going to eventually pour out into roads miles away. Everybody in the Shellpoint area is two and a half miles from 41, but everything that gets approved in that peninsula is going to end up on 41 and probably Big Ben Road and Gibsonson Road and 301. So people across South County who have to commute on those routes do have an interest in those land use decisions and should be heard in our processes as we consider the overall ramifications. Now, one specific thing I did discuss with staff in our briefing, and I thought I got some agreement on, is that in where this is discussed, Policy 2.2A, and the staff took the language from Thousand Friends of Florida and basically struck some of the specifics about what an affected person might be in definition, so that we could just keep it broadly, an interested party. And, you know, I totally agree that it should be very broad interested party and not exclude anyone. And if you start listing the kinds of interests that people have, you might inadvertently leave one off the list and leave yourself open to saying later, having to argue that that is an interested party, even though it's not on the list. Having said that, as we discussed with staff, we kind of came back around to thinking it would still be a good idea to provide examples such as Thousand Friends of Florida provided, and with some language saying included but not limited to. And this list is by no means a complete list. But in order to kind of explain to people the sorts of things I was just saying about the broad range of interests that people might have that would guarantee their right to be considered an interested party, a party of record, a party of, you know, that has a right to the seat at the table. So I offer that as a suggestion here, just so everyone, you know, might consider whether you agree or not, you could speak to that point of adding back some of that scratched-out language in that way, as a way of explaining kind of the types of classes of people, the kind of interests people might have. Thank you.
I'd be happy to work on that language if it's the consensus of the members present. I don't think that that would be particularly onerous or difficult for us to do, as long as we get that direction.
I'll just, I would agree with Commissioner Smith, and we kind of did a little bit of a straw poll the other day. I don't know if any other commissioners just like to speak up for a minute in agreement or not.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm supportive.
I'm supportive as well.
Okay, so I think, I'm sorry, anybody else want to speak? Okay, it sounds like we do have that, so you can feel comfortable moving ahead with that. And with that, I don't see any other comments at this time, I don't think, and seeing none. I think that that concludes our agenda. Is that correct, Mr. Nita?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you on the 24th.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you.